We are live. Okay.
With the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
A little call of meaning to order. Uh, we have to add on to the agenda, amend it to add claims.
Oh.
We got missed typing it up. So, uh, I'll look for a motion.
With that addition of claims, uh, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda, put the claims on it. I'll say it.
We have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve the minutes from five seventeen.
I, no, I did, I did you good because I didn't.
Oh, I did read through them. I think they're fine. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. Yeah, Dan, you have some information for the general public.
Do you want to say your name, sir? No, I don't. Um, this past week, Jean Moss, my civil deputy, has announced that she's gonna retire at the end of the year. So, what I would like, give the board's approval that, uh, I can go ahead and advertise and, uh, get somebody on board and, 'cause it's gonna take several months for, uh, whoever the new person is to learn all of them, uh, bookkeeping and all that kind of stuff, so.
The ways the office runs.
Yep, the ways, yeah, everything, so.
So, you will pretty much immediately advertise that position?
Yes, I would like to.
I'd like to get the process started.
Get it rolling, yeah.
Well, we really appreciate it, Jean's.
Yeah, she's been eleven years, so, yep, all right.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to, if it's all possible, I'd like to maybe get an ad in this week or next week and advertise it in a couple, two, three weeks and, uh, start the, start the process.
Good idea.
Yep. Appreciate it.
And the person that gets hired with her, kind of transition into it.
Yep.
Makes a lot of sense, given that position.
Yep, there's a lot of, lot of, lot there with the, you know, the, uh, civil papers and all that stuff and all the normal honest stuff they do.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right.
All righty.
Thanks for the heads up.
Anything else out there from the general public?
Give, give her our thanks.
Yeah, well, that kind of thank her.
Okay.
That's right.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it.
All righty, we'll probably move on to claims.
Well, I looked at the claims and I had two hundred and eighty-two, seven, twenty-two, fifty-one, and drainage of sixty-nine, ninety-nine, nine ninety-nine, eighty-three, excuse me.
That's what I had. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ben must be spending some road money.
Uh, I'm trying to think, there's a little bit on the pay vouchers to Matthew and another big chunk of rock.
Had a pickup for a sheriff that's got, throw it on there too.
Oh, yeah, that had, uh, yeah.
He had a bigger token, little tax.
Yeah, it was a little bit more than what we expected, but shit, for the rest of the, so.
Maybe it's a blackout place. Where did they send you that money?
I, I, I didn't know.
Oh, it's supposed to go secondary road. That was a lot of data, yeah. That's what I thought too, it's supposed to go to secondary road.
Usually, um, like August through April are relative low payments and then all other payments are major, it's a lot.
All right, Jana, we have some, uh, tax sale certificates.
We've got a copy of a letter from Gold Eagle Co-op. They were, um, contacted by this guy, I don't know, Construction or Guy's Family Farm, one of the two, is not in business any longer and this parcel did not get transferred back when that, when this settlement, the presence of that company is deceased. And they don't want it, so they have also agreed to let it go to Gold Eagle and so Gold Eagle thought the quickest way to get a clearing parcel would be to, to staff the board to assign them the, um, tax sale certificate from, what was it, nineteen, what was it? Nineteen ninety-four?
It's been that long?
Yeah.
Wow.
The county also, that sits there and, uh, we decided to do something with it or we find a neighboring park property owner that wants it. But he said he was paid a tax due of three thousand sixty-seven dollars. It's not a real pay parcel, it's been qualified to roll north there.
Mm-hmm.
And then they're asking to have the penalty and interest of being there.
That's that hundred by eighty in there?
Yes, the one in, that, let me, oh, wait, here, so.
Not really, which, which one is right there?
The mid, the mid.
The middle, the middle one there.
This one?
All right, sorry, no, yeah, that's the middle one.
This one?
That one there, yeah.
That's all?
That's all it is.
That is odd that that.
That's how it was there, I was thinking it would be more like adjacent to the field side, it's right in there.
Yeah.
Just that one parcel?
It's just the one parcel? I think the Co-op, aren't you? Everything.
Baby Co-op, comes everywhere.
Just that one highlighted one right there.
That's all that got missed and.
Mm-hmm. Well, it just got missed, that's probably what happened.
Yeah, the, 'cause that company that it was, the type, David Tyler, doesn't even exist anymore.
Yeah, they've been long gone.
Yeah.
Well, nineteen ninety-four, that'd be twenty, thirty-some years?
Wow, well, I can see now, because I was gonna say, how did it go that long? Well, it's, it's, they must've thought they probably purchased everything.
I was gonna say, but they thought.
They just bought a little chunk.
Yeah, they probably, yeah.
I mean, 'cause I was thinking, man, if this was a, that's a long time that something didn't come up from, from someone.
Yeah, I could see.
Well, I don't know if they have a new manager at Guy's Family Farm, if he calls and says, why do we keep getting liquid sales? We don't want any land over there.
Yeah, okay. I can see that. Okay.
Well, a technicality, so I would, uh, make the motion to approve that assignment of the tax sale certificate to Gold Eagle Cooperative with the, you said penalties and interest waived and just the tax, back taxes paid.
Okay.
How'd you expect it to end?
Three oh six seven, right?
Yep, he, he left me a check for about an hour.
Okay.
Sending you the report.
We have a first and a second on that. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then while you're here, or I'm here.
Thank you for having that picture, 'cause that's worth a thousand words.
Yeah, that, that kind of, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Looked like, no value really, they don't know.
No, no.
Want that, let landlords.
On their property.
And like you said, they probably bought it and it just never got transferred is the problem.
No.
Or they missed that when they signed all the rest of it, you know, all the rest of it.
Well, I think, her, compliments of both, him, her, she's an auditor's office and I have hired a replacement for her, Ashley Cruz, that started May eighteenth, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention and, you know, that we are, she's training with Jana Henniger and then we'll have to go offsite to do her drive training with the DOT with state.
So, that's the position she's gonna ultimately do, is the drivers?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Down here below, so I'd make that motion to approve the hiring of Ashley Cruz for the treasurer's driver's license, retroactive May eighteenth.
I'll say it.
We have a first, second from Dave. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we'll move on to you, Ben.
Morning.
Morning.
I've got, uh, five pay vouchers for you today. These are all for Mather Construction for various projects that they're currently working on. The first item that I have on the agenda is to pay voucher number one for Mather Construction for FM Parent seventy-eight, uh, for a total of sixty thousand, three seventy-one and fifty-nine cents.
Do we wanna do these one at a time?
It, it's, it's completely up to you, I can run them all as one, and you get the totals for all of them.
Why don't you do, is it okay just to go through each one and then get a total and approve them?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, so, the FM parent seventy.
You tell us something different that you have an issue with any of them specifically.
Nope, they're all going the same person.
I was gonna say, it's one company, so.
Yeah, they're all going back to the same company.
Okay.
Uh, the first pay item is for sixty thousand, three seventy-one, fifty-nine. The second one is for four hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. The third is for twenty-seven thousand, three seventy-three and thirty-one cents. The fourth is for sixty-eight hundred, fifty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. And the last is for a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and one cent.
We have, for clarification, are these, uh, payment vouchers per project?
These are all split up per project, so.
At least one of them is on a separate project.
Parent seventy-eight is Delaware Avenue on the east side of Pioneer. Parent seventy-nine is the Blair Road and the extra work order that we did up north of Boad and East Livermore. Uh, parent eighty is Gosh Park. Uh, L seventy-six is Drag Strip and L seventy-seven is Two Hundred and Eightieth Street, done, outlined by Pioneer.
Okay, so they're per project?
Yep.
And each accordingly, you have forty-eight percent on the Delaware project, completed forty-nine percent and then the other ones are put like less than ten, so there must just been the milling?
Just the milling.
Yeah.
Um, so, on Delaware, right now, we're, we're finishing up the last of the surface lift on that and then basically they'll be down to just edge rub, or edge rub shouldering material. Um, on parent seventy-nine, they're hoping to get started on the base lift of Blair Road north of C forty-nine today. That one mile stretch south of C forty-nine is complete, minus the shouldering. Um, and then everything up north of Boad is completed, but we haven't put the overlay on east of it yet, or what we extra work order.
Mm-hmm.
On parent eighty, we've got three fourths of the asphalt done with the last lane of surface being completed today, barring breakdowns. Um, Drag, Drag Strip has only had just the milling done and, I already said, Two Eightieth, that's the other local, and then Gosh has just had the milling as well.
So, you were pretty well correct, Bruce, that's it. Yep. And one other thing on the, so, is any edge rutting, as you call it, replacing shoulder rock? The county's doing any and all of that?
No.
Nope?
Those are all part of projects.
They were.
Yep. The only one that wasn't was what we added on, uh, the extra work order north of Boad, we said that we'd do it.
Okay, 'cause you had mentioned that a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
And that one, the.
The loss that they wanted was like.
Too much.
It was too much, I mean, because they had higher additional trucks.
These other projects are, if you call it edge rutting included, except, well.
Just for Boad and, and east going up the hill, it's like.
That's, county will take care of that, but, the other ones were inclusive.
And so, those are all part of projects, okay?
Well, having said that, if we give the motion, I'd make the motion to approve all of these pay vouchers that we just, we stood and talked about.
You have a first?
Okay.
Go ahead.
A second from Sandy, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Are they gonna get them all finished this week?
Oh, not this week. Too much, a little, too much stuff around.
Today's talking about Memorial Day, I just wonder.
Uh, I, I was hoping so, Mother Nature just had to rain on us two days. Last week, we were broke down Friday, uh, at plants, we tried running Saturday, we ran for about an hour, hour and a half before we broke down on Saturday, so I'd say, barring breakdowns, we should be done with that stretch by Pioneer today. And then they'll move up to the Blair Road and set down and take off, they're gonna do the base lift on the Blair Road and then they're gonna move over to Gosh and do Gosh and the other two projects and try and finish with the surface lift on in the Blair Road. That way, it's got less truck traffic right off the bat, but, so.
Could you shoot me an email Friday and let me know what roads are closed and what are open?
They're all technically supposed to be closed to true traffic, but obviously with this being Memorial Day weekend and Gosh Park being down at the south end, that will be open, uh.
It's just, it's a little rough.
It's just gonna be a little rough for them to get in and out right now, but all the barricades are pulled apart far enough that people with campers.
Campers can get in and out.
No problem getting in and maneuvering around.
I was thinking about doing the honor guards at all the cemeteries I need to get to.
Yep, same thing. Being able to get in and out to the cemetery, I've had a few phone calls at our office, we told them, you will be allowed to get in, so.
Yeah.
Um.
It's a little fun to ride on a motorcycle.
Yeah, be very careful.
Be very careful on motorcycles. Uh, Jensen's supposed to be there today putting in shoulder tile east of Livermore.
Oh, great.
Uh, he was supposed to be there on Friday, but with Mother Nature raining, I would say, better stay.
Excellent, so that's, that's good.
So, the shoulder tile should be going in today, I haven't talked to him this morning yet, but.
Okay.
That's gonna be good.
Yep.
Okay.
We're, we're on her, we're slowly.
I have one other question for you.
Yeah.
I was, visited the new compost pile the other day, um, one of the days that the wind was blowing like mad. What's, there's nothing, no fence on that at all, how long's it gonna take for that north ditch is full of leaves and debris that are blowing from the compost into that? I'm, I'm just asking, what are, what are, what are your thoughts?
I have not been by there since I saw the driveway put in. Uh, I did drive by after they first started putting some loads in the compost area, but I have not driven back there since.
Well, on the, when we have a north, northwest wind, there's nothing to stop it, that just.
It's gonna, it's gonna blow into the ditch and.
Right up against precision plastic building. I just was wondering what, I mean, it's a little wet now, 'cause it's got a lot of, there's, I mean, there's a lot of compost that get taken in there now.
Yep.
Weak.
That would be on, uh, the Humboldt Development, that applied for the original.
I know, I sat in on a meeting, can't remember what day it was, and they were talking about fencing due to that issue.
I just think that it's gonna be in our ditch before.
I can touch base with Alyssa and see what the plans are, I mean, they've been good.
Mm-hmm.
They, they paid up.
I think at the time, they're talking, they, they're talking fencing to the north, not the south side, but neighborhoods, I'll mention that, that they should consider fencing the south also.
Well, I just think that this, the way the wind blows out there and the way the wind blows around here, period, we, the ditch is gonna be full of leaves and whatnot.
Yep.
So, just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I will, uh, I'll make a note to give Alyssa today.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not trying to pass the buck, but I thought we should at least look and maybe before something. Thank you.
And I know, they, they do take them paper sacks out there that got leaves in them and.
Yeah, well, there's also, I saw on, I don't remember if it was Facebook or somebody had posted, I don't understand, when the city gives you a place to take branches and whatnot, and they still haul them out to the compost and throw them in there when they shouldn't take them down to the city shed where they have piles? And then you go down to the city shed to dump branches off?
And there's a pile of leaves.
And there's a pile of leaves, because somebody was too lazy to take them both directions. They gave you, gave you the option or gave you the ability to get rid of it, but we had those people, so.
Yeah.
I'll get off the box.
Okay. Anything else? Well, Ben, let's tell you, beans are here, I wonder if, we do have time before Jamie, think we have enough time to talk to Drainage thing?
Yeah, we seem to have a lot of time, and he's not gonna be until nine thirty.
What, uh, are we doing for, did we figure out, are they switching to hours then?
We switch before ten to the week after next.
And I just wanted to do that with still the plan?
I talked to the guys, for the most part, they're all still in favor of it, um, especially my new guys that don't get any vacation that first year, they're looking forward to the extra time off.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, we will be switching to four tens, uh, the week, the full week after Memorial Day and running till Labor Day with four tens.
All in all, it's past couple of years that's been implemented, it's worked pretty well.
Yes.
And from what you.
Yeah, I mean, it, uh, it gives the guys time to service their equipment and do their walkarounds before the quarry opens in the morning, um, you know, because they start at six-thirty, I think the quarry opens at seven.
Yeah.
So, it gives them thirty minutes to fuel up, kick tires, make sure all the lights are working, uh, and then the quarry runs till five, I believe, so they can push later hauling rock. Some of our, uh, blade routes that are further away from the shop, they're able to hit the entire stretch. Uh, we've got a couple of local construction projects that we're gonna try and tackle with county forces, those longer days will amount to more productivity on those jobs.
Say it's fuel running in and out, 'cause it's one less day.
Yeah, there, yeah, I mean, generally.
Plus, it's, it's, it's one, one less lunch period, uh, coffee breaks, you know.
You just get a lot more done.
Right.
Way more efficient.
That's, that's good.
You know, I, I think I've noticed an improvement.
I've had very favorable comments from, I mean, well, some of the, you know, Southern Great Roads guys, the, the greater thing is, you know, you can get out and kind of figure that, okay, let's just finish this.
Yeah.
And, you know, and along with, like Ben said, the projects, if you're working on a particular project, then you kind of know, obviously, beginning, beginning of the week and, you know, okay, we got four days, we got these longer days, get these projects done. And hopefully, maybe some of them you can get done this day, depends on the project, and that extra, you know, hour or so is helpful.
There's also, I mean, there's also the flip side, I mean, eight hours is a long day in a blade, so ten hours is that much longer, I mean, picture it like sitting behind the wheel of a, of a tractor, you know.
Yeah, it's like coal, wheat and corn.
Yes.
If we don't do any more.
No, if I hit that, that's a long day.
Yeah, those were long days.
Yeah, but, you know, the, the guys, finding the machine, walk around, stretch a bit.
Yeah.
Kind of wait back out and jump back in.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Well, I think we, we got this, um, private tile crossing checklist we wanna go through, so let's maybe move into drainage and do that, so Kim's in here.
Yep, I'll make a motion to go to drainage.
Second.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna move into drainage.
Ben, thanks for this, uh, working with her on trying to put this step by step. I don't know if it's gonna work, but I.
If there's, if there's more that you want on there, just, you know, let me know.
I just think it's someplace where we can start, trying to get a check sheet to know where, what we've done, what we haven't done, why it hasn't been done, and I suppose somebody coming in and mad that we aren't doing something.
Should make it.
It's a pretty tough plan, for me, I mean.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of a good thing to have, no matter what you're doing, for us, but.
Well, as Kim's learning, I think we all learned.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's been an interesting week.
Sure, sure.
Okay, let me get documented on the sign here. Well, I've left you all with a lot of notes, but we will start with several phone calls I have received from Bruce Hestie and multiple visits to the office. He has stated since the last private crossing, he has not received any of the answers to his questions about continuing with three additional private crossings, which are marked on the bottom of your map. Um, one location is just on the north of his property, one directly south, and then one about a half mile south of the intersection. And he wants to know how soon that he can start, um, his improvements with the twelve inch tile crossings. So, initially, I had told him the steps that he would need to proceed by starting with a petition, and he stated clearly that he does not wanna file the paperwork, he doesn't wanna go through the added expense of an engineer's report. So, Ben was ever so gracious as to, um, he checked some of my verbiage and I was trying to put a step-by-step process together for private tile crossings. And Ben said he already had this on an Excel spreadsheet, so he sent it to me, and that would be the, the, on the legal paper that you have at the bottom.
Do with it, oh, right there.
And the only amendment that we actually made to this was we did include in step one that they would be required to include the slope.
Or the grade.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Ben had everything else, um, but we just, we just revised that to add the slope. And then, um, we increased the font size for the steps, so it, it just shows a little bolder.
Mm-hmm.
But I just want everybody to have a copy of that. If you can think of any other amendments that we need to add, um, the only thing I was thinking is down in step three where it says claims for damages, I could add pursuant to Iowa Code four six eight point six oh four.
Yeah, and what that is, is that's a timeframe for adjacent property owners to file damages against the person wanting to take private tile crossings.
Correct. And in, in the packet that is stapled together, there is a copy of a drainage petition to file, if you would like to make any amendments to that. Um, then, Ben also provided the, the chapter, um, Iowa Code guideline for all verbiage for the road tile crossings. And that's where I had marked, um, at number three, if we wanna include any, any additional verbiage in the new checklist, so that it specifically references the state code for the four six eight six oh four. And then you also have, the last two pages is actual copies from the Iowa Code book, so it will take you through step by step. Um, and anyone that inquires about doing private crossings from here on will also receive a copy of these drainage codes as well.
Mm-hmm.
For the most part, people that want to do private tile crossings fall under the first, the first two questions on that checklist. Most of them just go after the fifty percent up to two thousand for gravel road crossing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, other than this most recent one where we, uh, dealt with the, what I'll call the corporation, 'cause there was multiple families.
Multiple, yeah, multiple landowners.
Yes. Um, as far as Bruce and his three crossings, the first stop one, he doesn't own them too.
Right.
So, he's got no claim to stake. Uh, the two that are in the adjacent property of his home currently are six inch tile lines. If you do the amount of twenty-five, twenty-six acres, that's from the center of the road east, that's not part of the drainage district, and assume all of that had to cross the road back to the west, one single twelve inch line will do it. So, you could eliminate this ask for one north of his house and one south of his house and just say a single twelve will cover everything.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and you can, so you can get this down to one permit by denying the other.
Or you could say no, because two sixes adequately, adequately drain twenty-four acres.
And, and the, as, as the board, you can, you can say that, the two sixes are working adequately, uh, if the one on the north side of your acre. If the one on the north side of your acreage isn't working properly, it's because you've got tree roots from your acreage that have flooded.
And the two sixes are already here right where they, he wants the 12, correct?
I haven't talked to Bruce, he doesn't come out to the office to discuss it. He's going to the drainage clerk to discuss it now. There are two sixes that have been there since the road was graded back to the 50s that have been adequate.
And he has copies of both of those grading maps that you sent me a month ago. And they were highlighted yellow, and he knows exactly where they are. And those are the two that he's adamant in wanting to replace, both of those with the 12-inch.
Well, he can replace them, the county can deny payment.
Yeah, the thing is, we're not saying he can't do it, we're saying his, the taxpayers aren't gonna pay for it.
Right.
Because he already has adequate drainage there. If he wants to upgrade it and drain more land that isn't, that's coming from maybe the drains district.
But the funny thing is, is that, so if you would just request 50% up to 15 and not turn in any of the information, we don't have the same stipulation.
No, we could still say, no, we're not paying for it.
Right. That's where we talked about setting a cap for the year for how much money I spend on these private tile crossings. And then once that amount is reached, you can go ahead and do your crossing, you might just, you just might not get paid for a year.
A year until you have the money available.
You'd go on the list and basically it goes by when the work is completed, when it's approved and completed, you would go on the list and get paid out. So if you set the cap at 30,000, and we've already done gravel road crossings, our, our, now our balance is maybe 15,000.
Right.
And that's all that we have available to spend.
And that verbiage could be added to step six, because as it states now, that it shall be paid by secondary roads if funds are available.
Well, that's pretty well-
And we could change that so we could put an exact verbiage in there.
Which, I mean, that's a amount that we set aside. I mean, as far as budgeting, it's difficult to put a number into pipes and crossings when you don't know how many you're gonna get during the year.
This year you have a dry year, you don't have, need near as many crossings as-
Right.
-two years ago when it was monsoonian and everybody wanted drainage, so-
Everybody's patterned out, you know?
Right.
So other than, um, just addressing that one major issue, that's, that's really all I have. And then I had added you, um, at the bottom, and everybody was given a copy of the sanitation contract. You wanted to look that over? Okay.
So Ben, do you think we need to put that number of the drainage code on here?
Pretty much everything in that checklist refers back to Iowa Drain, uh, individual drainage law in the Iowa Code, it's 468.600.
That was, uh, you said step three, Kim?
Yeah, step three.
I think that can be added, because if you look at the other, it does state that, references, and then if you, you can find that code and read through it about the damages, that's fair.
Right.
And I think that step six, this is on Ben's spreadsheet, that makes sense. It said if funds are available, because you're basically giving, you kind of got to budget an amount for crossings of whatever sort of payment. Then, like you said, it may be the following year before-
Right.
-you get another pool of money to pay for it. So I don't hold it, and that's the explanation right there.
Yeah.
Exactly, we don't know-
Dollars, no, I don't think you need, there's nothing code-wise there, it's just, that makes sense. Because you're gonna say, you're gonna have something there, but if you have, uh, three paid-for crossings that are legitimate, you're gonna have a lot of money involved, you're gonna have to pay for the following year, because you're not gonna wanna budget hundreds of thousands of dollars for crossings.
Like I said, in the last 15, 20 years, this last one was the only one that's gone through the whole steps of hearings and, you know, whether or not they hired an individual drainage engineer for a report. Usually, everybody just goes for the 50% of the cost of the crossing up to $2,000.
More boring.
More, more boring. Boring is, is now a, a more recent deal, and like we talked about in the past, not open cutting a blacktop saves us a potential loss.
That and years of patching.
Yes.
Yeah, and having issues with that.
Settles some damage.
So that's all good stuff, but it still gets back to, I think that's fair, I would recommend putting in the code number.
For step three.
Yes, just as a reference, because otherwise-
I agree.
Otherwise, in the grand scheme of this, any of these crossings, Bruce in particular, with all this business, he has to go through these steps, period. I mean, I don't know how much clearer it can be to anyone.
Well, he states he doesn't have to-
Well, he does.
And that's, that's why-
And if he doesn't-
I've done all of this so I can present the paperwork to him and say, this is what you need to do. And even Ben and I had discussed that the private crossings actually need to be addressed through secondary roads instead of the drainage clerk.
Yeah, because the drainage clerk has really nothing to do with them.
And that can be your outward calls, is this is private tile crossings, this doesn't have anything to do with drainage district?
No, this is not a drainage district crossing.
Right.
But, that's sort of your defense than everybody else's. You still have to come to the county and ask for money for my whole crossing across County Road, I'm bored. You can't do your amount of money.
When you're asking fellow taxpayers to pay for the crossing-
Yes.
-you have to follow the procedures.
Yes, and I think this would be the procedure, actually, if I'm wrong.
It is.
And I don't care who you are. It is, it has been on this code for many, many years, but it's always been stated, follow these steps. I don't think you made any of this stuff up.
No.
Uh, just put it in the illegible form. So it comes in front of, I guess if it's private, I gotta question that. If it's a private crossing, we're not the board of drainage district trustees, we're the county supervisors.
Yes, county supervisors, yep.
So-
So your action on, on whether you pay or not is-
But it still takes these steps. You decide, like Rick said, we're spending county money, you know-
We're spending taxpayers' money.
Which is taxpayer's-
Which is your neighbors'.
Right, which is everybody's. Exactly, so it's, you know, just like everything else, it gets in front of us, we have to have a legitimate reason, you know, for spending taxpayers' money. And this is, this is, nothing changed from 100 years ago, you might say, and when these codes were written, follow the steps. It's gotta be presented in a legible form to the board of supervisors to make an informed decision to see if that's the case.
Yes.
And there's a lot of stuff, this one in particular, and there could be others, and we've discussed a lot of it. This is extremely close to an existing drainage district. These are unusual requests, given what we know now, these three crossings, this is all sort of a bit facetious. But if you, we have legitimate information to look at and discuss and decipher-
Yeah.
-that's what we want, but, and that's all we're asking of anybody. So it shouldn't be that complicated.
No.
And this, Ben did a great job of making it less complicated with the checklist. I think so.
So then when someone, Bruce Schremer's comes in to do a crossing, this is the packet that will be given to the-
Yeah.
To me to say, oh, I did that, no, I still got that stuff to do. That's, I think, where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, you-
I think it'd be all-
It's a legitimate request.
It's just not that complicated.
I think, I don't think so either.
Nope.
And like Ben stated, most people come in, visit them and say, you know, we're going from point A to point B with a new tile, and they more often than not take the first checklist and go with that and get the permit and-
It's simple.
Because, because there usually is an additional expense, you are hiring an engineer to fill out a report, you know, uh, to do a drainage evaluation. I mean, there, it's not like there's a free piggy bank of money over there, I mean, you have to spend money to be able to try and claim that.
I mean, by the same token, as far as any information that comes in front of us, I mean, we can waive an engineer's report or we can request it. We have to have legitimate information to decide if, like Rick said-
Yeah.
-we have spent taxpayers' money for costs, uh, you know, a road.
Yeah.
Well, there's valid reasoning for it.
It's always been there. It's not, this, we're not doing that in the weeds, we're just saying that this is, I don't know why this is such a mountainous thing.
Yeah.
And I think we've done our due diligence in researching it, which we started this way back. Now it's even better with the checklist, it's a pretty simple process.
I agree.
And, you know, just because you don't like something, that's too bad. You follow this and we look at it, we, then, that's how it's always been set up to do.
And then I will also create another checklist, I'll just follow Ben's format. And then I will do one for the step-by-step instructions for any drainage improvements that are at the 50,000 or above. Where we'll, we'll do the bid letting and the hearing.
Well, that's changing in July.
Yes.
First of July, it changes to the 139, 139,000.
The cap will be higher.
The cap will be higher.
I have a question, we're in drainage, right? So this is a drainage district question. So if someone were to file a petition for a ditch cleanout, we have what's the cap on it?
Right, currently it's 50, but it's gonna be 139.
139, it's after, in July, this year. So, 139, can they still file a petition? And we can look at the petition, and I'm gonna use ditch cleanout specifically, that we determine, we do not need to hire an engineer, but we will follow up on the petition for the cleanout.
Yeah, it is up to our discretion. And even if it's something small, we think, I think we need this looked at. Say it's only a $25,000 project, we can still hire an engineer if we think it's needed.
Right, but I mean, my question is, they, the folks in the district that have said ditch can still file a petition into the clerk and for us to look at it. And we can look at that, like you said, decide, oh, okay, this is, and I'm using cleanout specifically, I'm not talking about a, you know, $2 million tile improvement project. But, still, so they certainly can still file a petition, and we can take a look at that, now we have a higher cap to work with and decide what the best route for that. It would still be, uh, probably a maintenance on it.
Yes, more of a work order.
Yeah, it's more of a work, because it's not really an improvement, it's a maintenance.
Yeah.
Which we've been doing-
Because if it's considered an improvement, then it's classified different.
Right, but if we consider it a maintenance, we can take a look at that petition, determine where it is, what it is, and act accordingly.
Yeah.
But they can still file a petition to bring it to the trustee's attention.
Yep.
Very, very good.
Anything else?
So are you looking for, I mean, what's this resolution then?
These, this is just information, right, this, this is where all the codes, the new resolutions, everything ties into amending any of the documents that I gave you. If you feel that there's anything that needs to be added, let me know. If you feel anything needs just a little fine tuned, let me know. Basically, I gave you copies of everything you would need, the Iowa Codes, the amendments, um, a copy of the, the current step-by-step. And the, the only thing, like Ben said, we added the slope. And then I just asked him to increase, like, the font size for the steps, so they'll stand out a little bolder.
Ken, did you, I mean, obviously, you looked at this, do you see anything that needs to be changed? Because basically, we're just getting, like you said, the fonts and the couple of rewordings.
Yeah, the only thing I-
I don't think they're missing anything, are they?
No, the only thing I just thought when I read through for the claims was add that pursuant to Iowa Code 468.604.
So they can go and read that.
Right, then-
Because then you have a copy of that, a couple pages back here.
If you can think of anything that you would want me to attach, so if, if somebody came in their very first time and said they, they're interested in doing a private tile crossing, I would give them the checklist and I would give them a copy of the Iowa Codes.
Yeah.
They would also have a copy of a blank petition form.
And then you would direct them to go to Ben's office with that information.
Exactly.
But, as we've stated, differential, there's no petition for private.
Right.
Petitions are drainage district.
Right, but if, if they would choose to go above that cost, above the 50% of the cost of, of 2,000, it still isn't-
They have to file a petition for a hearing.
Right, if they decide, you know, that's only, that's the code for the crossing. Don't, don't, we don't wanna complicate petitions for improvements in drainage districts. They would, no, they would have to have the petition for the hearing that goes back to the checklist. So all of that, it's just very, very clear now.
Yeah, and I would like to personally put a copy of all of this in the mail and send Bruce Hefte.
I think you should.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'd say publicly to Kim and, and Ben's assistants, this is a very good thing to do.
Yep.
Did your due diligence and got this out and available to everyone or anyone that would be interested. And we've all become more knowledgeable about these things, and, uh, it's good work.
Well, that's what I told her when we were visiting, I said, I think we're all learning.
Oh, yes.
Make sure that it's done properly. And the easiest way to do it is put it in front, and when someone walks through the door, you say, here, here's your packet.
Exactly.
We're here to help you, and Ben's here to help you, but we're gonna do it by the steps, because we have to follow the rules the status said.
Right.
Well, and Rick brought up a good point, why we follow these rules. So there's, it's been clear, we've been going through it, and we wanna make it easier for everyone involved, if there's anything down the road, for whomever that is.
I've been here five months, and I will be the first to admit, I do not know everything about drainage, so it's a learning process.
This is, like Bruce said, it's, it's a lot easier to have the information in front of us.
Yeah.
Or anyone that's questioning it, they have the option. I like the, the beginning one, they can look at that, Kim can give them the information, they can look at that, they can think about it. They might go to Ben and say, hey, this is what we're doing, it's a private crossing, and then they'll work with them, uh, to what degree? And if they wanna follow past, uh, point D, I'll call it, then they know what they have to do. And they have to do that.
When we do budgets this fall, we'll have to, you'll have to set up an account for tile, you know, tile crossings. Private, private tile crossing.
We're quoting all of, all of the checks that we've been issuing, we're quoting separately, so we'll get an idea of how much we've spent.
Try for current.
For the year, and then the one that we're about to start.
It's a good idea.
Get a ballpark idea.
Game, how much we've spent, yeah.
That's awesome. Figure out what that number is when you punch through it, because you're always good about breaking down your expenditure, your budgeting expenses. That's good, though, I think that's fair, because you can't, you could get a weird year and, and we just can't have $200,000 for tile crossing. I mean, I said, wait, but still.
Okay.
That's good stuff.
Yep.
You didn't visit about the sanitary room, or is that-
That's not drainage.
No, I know it's not drainage, but it's in that packet.
Right, I just, I left everybody copies, I knew that was on the agenda.
I wish you had permission here.
Exactly.
Well, other than that, all that fun stuff, Kim, it's just everything else in drainage.
There's, uh, quite a few drainage claims to approve, so if everybody could just step out and I'll give everybody copies for signatures after the meeting.
Okay, stick around.
All right.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Ken.
Wanting to go out of drainage, yeah?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we're out of drainage.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
I will, well. All right, I'll go get a check.
Just below my signature.
Good. Then you go from heat to air conditioning. You're all, you didn't mean to heat, right away.
Sometimes on the same day.
I know it.
We're absolutely, absolutely, we'll turn off then and we, then we'll get on again.
I know.
Back and forth. We're getting outside, if you know, living in a real stable climate, it's very old.
I know. My brother's up in Stillwater in Oklahoma, and we were actually women and they were.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yesterday, I think it was, unbelievable. Yeah, yesterday, I think it was, unbelievable.
It's a bad.
Yeah, Thursday, it's sixty-four with forty-five for a low and then sixty on Friday.
We are going to discuss complaints regarding jointly shared sanitaryian and review contract agreement. I think Bruce fielded the call from someone, has anyone else had issues?
I just, I guess, long story short, I had a phone call from a person that had dealt, or been at a site where they were putting a new facility, new house, new, I'm assuming septic tank. And there were some questions about the way that the septic system was supposed to be set up and this gentleman was asking some questions and they weren't sure what the answer. So I said, I asked Trish, when I got the call, who do, who do we call? Do we, do we deal with the sanitaryian? Do we have the ability to do that or do we call over Pocahontas and? So I guess that's my question.
Well, it says here, the Board of Health shall be responsible for the operation of the day-to-day matters and room administration of the offices, so.
That's the Board of Health in Pocahontas, I'm assuming?
If I remember right, Ann was already here. She said that if there was any problems, you know, complaints, we were supposed to get ahold of Ann over there in Pocahontas County.
Does anybody ever get his phone number?
Yes, yes. And when you call, you say, yes, or hello, you know, formality of, hi, this is Nate, blah, blah, blah.
Well, I guess that's my question is I just, I told the gentleman that I would.
Is it Nate Holford? Is that the guy's name? What is his name?
Well, Bruce, were they having trouble getting hold? Getting hold somebody?
That's Ben's.
Yeah, Ben's.
It is, yeah. I think we got, maybe an email or something, I kept it, now I got to find it.
Well, I have a feeling, well, I know this guy's new at it.
Yes.
Due to his age, he hasn't got a whole lot of experience in the, in the field, so. He'll, he'll be a little rough around the edges at first, but hopefully he has some sort of form he follows so he knows depth of weed fields, the perk test, the distance from near wells, things like that.
That was what this kid was wondering or making sure of is, you know, if you're not sure, make sure you verify before you sign something or before you okay something. Because he says, I'm going to have to go deal with it if it's not installed properly.
Yeah, if it doesn't, if it isn't done right, you don't want to go back and have to dig it up.
So that was his question and he just said, do I contact you guys and, or do I contact who? I said, I'm not sure. So that's why I checked with Trish and thought we'd put it on there, whether we should talk to Ann or whether we should.
I would say we talk to Ann.
Yeah.
She's his.
She's his supervisor.
Supervisor.
They take the administration part of it over there at Pocahontas.
Yeah.
So it's Ann.
Well, I'm kind of reading this joint agreement thing and to contact the local county Board of Health. Where health authorized any septic or injection. And then they contact, I mean, this is quite a chain of command, but calling the local county Board of Health and then they reach out to the, I don't know.
Well, I guess that's the question, we'll just, we'll do it with her and if that's the way we go, we'll do that, however they want to.
But I think it's within our rights to say, hey, we've got this issue, we want to, we want to know what the resolution is though, too.
Right.
Well, if you can't get ahold of somebody, what about that you have this, he's the sanitaryian, sure it's sanitaryian, his number, and if you're a contractor, putting in a septic system, you contact him and say, hey, we're going to need this inspected.
Right.
And, you know, like I said, we, this chain of command business is only going to slow things down. Well, that way you can schedule it and say, I can be there tomorrow or the next day and we'll get her taken care of. Pretty much what they're so hungry.
County is more or less leasing this guy services.
Right.
So they need to contact Pocahontas Board of Health.
Correct.
To get him to send over here, because he works for Pocahontas, not us.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, that's what I said. You contact the Board of Health then, and then they contact them, they contact them and they come over here. And I can, I'm not a contractor, but I can do all this process, I can start to feel their frustration.
Well, Bruce, I know you probably don't really want to do this, but I would say, why don't you call Ann and just tell her your concerns that you had from your person who called you.
I appreciate that.
I know you would. You know, but if, if you don't tell them, they don't know.
No, that's right, and that's what we said, we've got to, you know, and she even said that if there is issues, I want, you know.
It all comes down to communication, so we need to communicate to their Board of Health that our contractor, or this contractor wasn't very happy with the response they had from the sanitaryian.
Right.
Yeah, he didn't put it that way, it didn't seem very knowledgeable of his job.
Right.
And he was just wanting to make sure that, he doesn't know what's to do.
Send somebody that does.
Check it out before I have to come back and dig up a brand-new system.
Bingo.
So.
And you can't fix something you don't know that isn't working.
Right, so we need to communicate that to them over there and then they can give him better instructions or whatever.
Right.
So then Trish is going to call?
What?
Would you say you were calling?
Well, you have first, you have firsthand knowledge, Bruce.
Thank you.
I know, it's a mean thing to do, but.
Well, and do I sit over there next to you?
I know, retaliation.
Look at the whole support of the ballot.
Oh, yeah, I can tell, I can feel the love.
Yeah.
Speaking of love, it's almost nine thirty, it is nine thirty.
And they're right on time.
And letting all these people in here.
Wow.
Okay, well, I think we're ready for you, Jamie.
All right.
Yes, how are you?
I'm glad I'm up here.
I'm talking for a while.
Yeah. About a week.
About a week, yeah. About a week.
I found it after we were all done.
All right, this is just, just the six-month report, what I've done before and the past year. And just want to share with you the numbers that we've got so far through this year. One of the things I like to point out, that I've done with the county so far this year, is I guess I kind of expected to see numbers differently and why did? I guess I was looking at those more of calendar year than I was how they start at different points in the year, like mid-year. So some of the pandemic numbers are on part of last year's as well as part on this year's. So that's why we're not going to see huge dramatic increases. It's about stable, that's what, believe it or not, it was last year at this time, which is a good thing. Which means that we're reaching out and there's good information getting out to the people and they're coming and getting the services that they need. So far for this year, we're looking at about a thousand thirty-eight families are individuals to see and then four hundred and thirty-eight families compared to last year at this time, which would have been, just as the pandemic was getting going, it was eleven hundred and fifty-eight last year. So it's relatively the same, it's by about a hundred individuals, so. The report I like to really look at is the one in the blue bars that you've got. Okay, on that one, that kind of describes the services that we've received. And you can see, obviously, the highest numbers are in the food programs, special projects and emergency energy services. This year, we're back on, we'll start with the first one, that speaks to the light heat program, the one from housing and energy assistance. And usually those numbers fall in that area, that's where you see bigger numbers. Also, they are part of what they call the ESIP program. So if a home has a bad furnace in it or whatever, we can do an emergency service on that one to get that furnace up to the grade and help families out. So that's for that dollar amount and those services go for that particular one. Obviously, one of the biggest programs that we have here is the food program. And you can see that we've served pretty good-sized numbers there. The good thing is that when you look at the cost of that, it looks like it's a low number, but we have a lot of different funding sources coming into this county as well as other areas that help to offset that rather than just regular grant monies that come into that. So that's a good thing and we get a lot of donations for that particular program. Housing is also one of those that are in there and that continues to increase across our 12th county area. The hard thing about housing is that there is no housing. And it's a constant battle to try to find a safe, affordable housing for individuals and families in the area that will need that guideline, because even though this is not money, it has a federal connection and it still has to follow those same guidelines, which requires that they have inspections and that they need to need there. Also, then, the biggest one I liked is the special projects, that's one of the big ones. And I guess that would be more the holiday and back-to-school efforts that we change accounts. So those are also a big drive and we can see they have large numbers. And the other one I'd like to point out is weatherization, they're back on full swing. They're averaging anywhere between twelve to fourteen houses a month, guys, and that's quite a few when you think about, we cover a seventeen-county area, so, with that weatherization program. So that's a real big one for them right now. We are hoping that as they continue to grow and there's, there's information coming down from the feds that they may look at trying to increase the funding slightly. If they do that, we'd like to bring on another individual which would help as far as evaluating and help offset those numbers. The hard thing about that, it's hard to grow capacity, because all of those guys have to have HVAC background. They have to be licensed and certified and then they have to go through a two-year training process to be able to do that job. So, you know, once you find the person, getting them comfortable and staying in, because they can make a good living on their own, you know, and we can't even come close to a deep with those salaries. But we do find some that, that want that job, that regular nine-to-five, they want to have to deal with having to run their own business or. And so, so they come on and, like I said, it takes about a good two, two, three years to grow those, those individuals. So we're hoping that we'll be able to add another one on to the group here soon, so. One of the things I started doing last year is giving you a revenue expense year sheet for, this is for the first six months. Now, the right column is.
Can I ask you a question, Jamie?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Under weatherization, household services three, so that's three houses that they grab?
Correct. And those houses could contain, most likely, based on that number what I'm seeing, the furnace replacements.
That's what I was wondering, wow, that's like twenty grand a house, that's a lot of coffee.
And it's quite high. And this year, I don't know if you're experiencing that and any of the things the county work is doing, but everything is skyrocketing.
Oh, the costs or just.
It should be illegal in some way. It's doubled for furnaces, leakages, buying and starting things. And that's the hardest thing our contractors are suffering with right now, so.
Supply, supply chain is really disrupted.
So, yeah, we're expecting those costs, we're praying that those costs do go down by the end of the year. And I think it's going to be a little while before that happens, so.
And what would be the guess on how many requests for that? They far outweigh the, I mean, you have a lot more requests than what we have the ability to find.
See, every time they do a light heat application, if they're qualified, they put them in for the weatherization program right away. So those two programs feed each other and, so I couldn't give you an exact number on that list, but it's quite high.
That, that, well, it's getting at us. We wish we could do more, but we can only.
Like a lot of things, yeah, there's more requests than there is money.
But then finding the contractors is hard, right?
Well, I get the question, I mean, I don't want to get overly technical. So, weatherization is essentially heating and air conditioning.
That, yeah, the pollution of and the windows, the field.
That's what I'm thinking, is that other things. And you have just dedicated people that do this, so they don't, they don't work someplace else, they don't have their own business. They, this is what they do, full-time.
They just work for them.
Then what we do is, the work for the home, as far as what happens in the home and they go and seal the windows, they do the, put in the HVAC system or whatever, those are done by contractors. Our guys go in there, evaluate the home, assess it, determine what needs to be made and then give an order to the contractor to do that.
They don't do the physicals.
No, no, but they're all each HVAC certified, so they can do what they have to. And a lot of times what they'll do is, some of those contractors don't always do everything that's directed as far as laid out, because they don't always follow the same standards. Our guys will go in there and do that work themselves, if they have to, if they can't get their contractor to go back.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah, and then they have to, like federal law has specific requirements and stringent regulations they've got to meet in there, pollution control, all those other things, so our guys have to monitor that as well. And then twice a year they get audited, so, and then the guys from the state come down and literally go through all the homes to make sure everything that they said was done, is done, so.
Wow, I wonder if it's tough to find those kind of people.
Well, it is. And on the homes, on average, per six months, they, the individuals who receive the weatherization save approximately three to four hundred dollars in that time period in energy costs once it's all done.
Because they'll also replace appliances. So like if they're not energy efficient, they can also replace appliances, so, to make the home an energy efficient apartment.
Water heater and refrigerators.
So I can see why you jump to about twenty thousand dollars for projects pretty easily.
It's just terrible right now. So, like I said, on the expenditures then, what you see right now is we are, based on the donations, and by the way, you guys for rural county have done exceptionally well on donations both in, not only the support we get from you all, but also from individuals throughout the community. And it's been really, really good to see that. You can see that there was a somewhat of a carryover from last year of about twenty-five thousand dollars. That money's in state, like we've always told you in your county, and they can use that money to start back up to this next year. Part of the reason for that excess last year was the number of donations that were received. But you can also see the expenditures were quite high for last year as well, so. We expect to probably balance out without extra, we're going to mean that as far as getting them settled into their quarters once that is done and from the expenses that will be related to that as well, so.
Knock on wood, we were told last Wednesday that the minister, I mean, that the gentleman or the contractor that has the roofing material, has it in his possession, so it's going to be done as soon as we can coax him to come this direction. So he's, Jim promised. Well, Jim promised that he would come over as soon as he got the material, so they, the material supposedly is here, so they can fix the roof, which they didn't want to fix the roof when it was raining and drywall get wrecked, so they haven't drywalled in there. So, long story short, the roof's going to be done and there is a date that's been set, actual guaranteed of a date, so that we can, somebody to your right is a little mean and wondered, have this date, that we got to have this done. So we twisted an arm or two and we were hoping that it's, your startup date will be, that's the plan.
I would like to try the plan.
I know.
As a planner, so.
I know.
That makes sense. Yeah, I'm just.
But you guys, everybody, I mean, like I told them at the meeting, they don't understand when we, we haven't even got out of school and you're already getting ready to start back-to-school programs that, you know. So everything, I said, they're all set by this book and that book says, in July we start doing this, this and this. So we got to have that building ready because they don't want to move from down there down to the new building in the middle of all of their busy time, so. I think we have it worked out.
Sounds like it, I hope it is, Paul, again, kind of filled me in, so.
We're hopeful that it's, the roof gets repaired, the drywall gets done, you guys will get moved and then we can have our food pantry open five days a week instead of. Because they're doing the, they're running the food pantry and we only have it one day now, so it'll be.
Way more available.
Way more available, so.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't happen during October, I don't think that's a problem. Yeah, longer than that during October. I think that's a good time.
August is not really... My major Thursday, unless I can talk one on day two and I'm wanting to work five days.
Now, do you think there's going to be a appointment? Is this going to be open more often for seeing the COVID or different things? Or how are they going to be doing that?
We're in the process of developing a reopening plan because we are still close to the public. So we haven't developed that plan yet. We're waiting for a little bit of board recommendations also tomorrow. And then just as the management team trying to figure it out, how that's going to look and work. Some counties are going to be a little bit different just because of the size. And then our bigger counties and then western is a little bit of a difference. Yeah.
I think when our state and federal programs, when we do face-to-face services, release the restrictions, that's going to help us out more. Because a lot of our home programs, FAD, SAD, some of the state programs, kids, some of those still have that restriction of that they can't do face-to-face and they can virtual. So once they allow us to go back in the homes, the neighborhood is about ready to make that happen. And I think one of the things I'm trying to do, and I can't believe how many restrictions there are, at asking the question, how many of you are vaccinated? I'd like to kind of get a percentage. That'll also help us set that threshold a little bit. But you've got to be real careful about asking this question because you ask.
Yeah, you can only ask at certain... Well, hopefully once they get the emergency, it's actually been approved, then you can open things up and you can ask those better. It's because it's an emergency, release.
Well, it's interesting in talking to some of the outreach already that I have and some of our program directors, it's not so much the workers as it is the families. They're a little nervous about getting face-to-face with individuals now, so now they've gotten used to that. Which I thought it was going to be the other way around, but that's not the case.
Well, we appreciate it. We appreciate what you guys do.
Appreciate you as well, so...
I guess we'll visit tomorrow. Tomorrow evening.
Tomorrow evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all.
Well, looks like we got pretty everything x'd off except media reports.
We'll get to that week. All right, on Tuesday, I had, I know the financial, our financial meeting and I have kind of this call. Thursday, the 20th, I met down with Rick and Dean on animal control person. And then this really wasn't county business, but I was going to bring up Saturday, we helped, or I helped out at the Union Cemetery with Dave and a group of people. We put flags out on the cemetery or on the stones for soldiers, which, I don't know how many of you have ever walked around the cemeteries that we have, but I showed Dave at one that was, the kid was born in, what, 18-something and he died, was killed in 1916? So we figured it must have been a Civil War kid. But this grave, that grave has been out there for over 100 years and you can't hardly read the writing on it. But it had the flyer, the service plaque on it. And we put a flag on it, but it's, it, just walking around and up on the older part of the cemetery, those, some of those stones are just, it's mind-boggling to think that that kid was a kid had been in that cemetery for over 100 years. I mean, with our holiday coming up, it's kind of gets you a little bit to think that those people did what they did and, you know, we have such disforward fighting back and forth. It's just that it was an honor to go out there and walk around and put flags up and be part of that. I just, I guess I never realized there was that many, just drive out by there. And you said you put another 40? So there's over 300 flags that are out there blowing in the breeze.
And what Kerry put out there, I bet we're pushing right at 400 just in Union. And we covered the rest of the cemeteries in the county that we found anyway.
And a reminder, we're going to put the flags up so we make sure they get the money done so they don't have to go around with that many flags. We put them up Thursday night at 5:00. And we got the school notified, so we get help from the young, strong, anxious kids that come up and run around a lot quicker than us older guys. So that's all I had.
All right. Tuesday, I had a Zoom meeting with Kitty Cat, daycare. Our new director was also on with that. And so I hope she's going to do a really good job and we're all looking forward to that. And Wednesday, I had CSS, mental health, kind of social services, HR committee on that. We just went over the handbook and different things for that. So that was that. And then we, I also had another Zoom meeting with Iowa Workforce Development. It was our nurse of Iowa one. We're working on the... With the new changes and everything, we've got to get all of our paperwork in order. And there's an MEU that we got to get out and get that approved. That's all of our service people that have to go through it and put down what they are. So we've got to get that approved. So that's been a fun thing. And then we also had our board meeting for Iowa Workforce Area Five on Thursday. And that was by June. That's all I had.
That was it?
That was it!
Okay. Wednesday, I had Region Five Hasmatt, Fort Dodge, down to Region Seven, Post Seven, I think it is, down at the Highway Patrol.
Is it just working out, Zoom forum, Dave, that new one?
It's out great. Working real good. In fact, there were several supervisors requested it to show up for their parades so they could show it off.
Show it off. Good.
They had several calls that they had. And that's going to be working out. Oh, it's working great. Looks nice. Shouldn't have, what it costs. Should be a lot of parades.
No kidding.
Go back from that one. We had a housing meeting on Wednesday. And on Thursday, I had a Boone River meeting. And I tried and tried and tried. My computer just went kaput, so I didn't get into that one. Outside of the flags on Saturday, that's all I had. And the flags will go up Thursday, the 27th, and we will take them back down probably Wednesday, the 2nd.
When we bring them down, it's always depending on...
Depending whether...
There's no weather.
Yeah, they're dry.
If they're dry, we don't take them down if they're wet.
If it's wet, we won't take them down.
And that'll be a flag.
If they're dry, we'll get them down on Wednesday. On Friday too for that. Yep, 5:00 then. Need lots of muscle to take them out of the ground and put them back away. Maybe we could use ladies and kids to...
The fullers.
I didn't have any actual meetings this past week. Had a real quick Monday morning, quick get-together with the 911 Service Executive Board, just touch base on a couple of things for an upcoming meeting. So that was really about it for anything semi-official.
Okay. On Tuesday, 5:30, I had landfill meeting in Fort Dodge for the regional landfill. Wednesday, I had the Hope County Housing at City Hall at 3:00. And then on Thursday, I met with Bruce and Dean at the EOC who talked about this animal control officer. At 4:00. So that's all I had. Is there anything else the board needs to discuss or if Trish has something for us or...
I don't believe I have anything else. Hang on.
Okay.
Well, one thing, this is just a, I don't know what you would call it. One of our county parks, a little more next to the park is the Old Settlers' Cave. It's an historic landmark, actually. There's an Old Settlers' Group. They've been working to replace the roof that needs to be replaced. And I guess I've had questions. Does the county have money for that? I said, "Well, I don't know." Spoke with Todd Lee. He was, Dean's idea, it's basically, it's adjacent to the park. It's kind of considered one of, you know, that park. He said, "I sure wish they would have, you know, would get that." But there is a group. There's money out there. Obviously, as we just talked about, the increased cost of the materials.
Materials, yeah.
It's going to be a lot more than, you know, what they had originally thought, obviously. But there's money being raised, I think, through that group. I don't know how much, that group, speaking of things historical, Bruce, probably started very shortly after the Civil War, honestly. And of course, as older folks have passed away, that's somewhat disbanded. It used to be a little big thing 50, 75 years ago. It's a huge organization. Now there's a very few, if any, members left. There may be some money there. I think the conservation could look, Todd said they could look because they'd like to see it. It is a, you know, kind of a landmark. And I don't know if the county have, not community betterment funds, but whatever. Is there any money, if needed, if they don't, if they need something?
What kind of roof are they looking to put on?
This wood shake single roof, like the original.
Like a wooden shake roof?
Yeah. It's not going to be a cheap fix. Because if they, they can't just put an asphalt roof on it. It doesn't, it's an old...
It is an old cavern. Find you some cedar trees, cut them down, cut one, slap, and slap them on.
So just for curiosity, is there any thing, Trish, and the, you know...
I can do some looking.
If you'd like. I mean, I know that there are a lot of people interested. They hope they can kind of just, like I said, what happened, the organization that was probably 100-plus years old is just kind of grumbled.
They're dying.
People that did look at, that did look at, they had. I mean, you can look back the historical records. It was a huge organization. It was, you know, like that people were, hundreds of members back. But remember, it's called Old Settlers. Unfortunately, they're not only old, they're gone.
Right.
So they're, just a question posed to me. I know the conservation would like to see that back to its original form with a new roof because it is, you know, next to the park. A tree branch fell on it a couple of years ago. And so I'm just bringing, you know, throwing that out. Trish can take a look, you know. The, what I've heard thus far is, you know, most, maybe if not all the money could be raised privately. Maybe there's some money left from the Old Settlers' Association, so they're hoping to do that. They're just kind of really wanting to get it done and not want the money to be an object. But it is going to be a fairly expensive project for them.
Shakes are really labor-intensive.
And so hopefully, it sounds like they, you know, a few people maybe need to get their heads together and get it kind of organized, but it's something that's doable. I think there's definitely money out there privately or from the organization. Just the question was asked and Trish would take a look. I know there's been other things over the years we've maybe been able to help them hold up, if that's the case. But I said, "I certainly can't promise anything." But it was good to hear from Todd. He said, "Yeah, we're aware of that and would like to see if they might have a little, their budget to put towards it, help them with that fix." So, so I throw that out there.
Anything else for the board?
Yep. Is there a meeting Monday?
I think we discussed Tuesday because we have to get Ben's budget amendment. So I think what we're going to do...
I know we discussed it last week a little bit, but it is on the agenda, so...
But there's no meeting Monday.
No meeting Monday. It'll be on Tuesday.
Tuesday at 8:30 like normal. We'll just make it a quick, quick meeting to take care of the budget amendment for the DOT because they have guidelines. It has to be done by certain dates.
Okay. Is anything else that comes up?
Yeah, there's something we need to take care of. We can take care of it at that time. Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a first and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're adjourned at 9:59.
9:59. Well, it moved.
It just jumped.